Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Thursday, November 7th, 2019. I'd like to call the Fitchburg City Council to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I would ask that anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves to the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Is there anyone recording this meeting this evening?
Yep, my name is Lieutenant Jeffrey Howe with the Fitchburg Police Department, 20 Allen Street, Fitchburg. I will be recording a portion of the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Lieutenant Howe. Counselor Boishman, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
It would be an honor. (Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, the federal republic which stands one nation under God, in the peaceful liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you please conduct the roll call.
President Kuschmerich.
Present.
Counselor Boishman.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Donnelly.
Yep.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Squelia.
Present.
Counselor Walsh. Counselor Zarella.
Here.
Public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are here addressing public hearing petitions, you all have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address to the record and the item number on the agenda which you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, if there are no objections, we'll now hear an oral report from the Appointments Committee, which met earlier this evening and took up the following two matters. Met on November 7th, 2019, both appointments were for the Human Rights Commission, for terms to expire November 1st, 2021 and 2022 respectively, and they were of Mr. Mike Lee to the Human Rights Commission and Ms. Elena Sofia Wakar as a student associate member to the Human Rights Commission. That was unanimously approved by the committee earlier today.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the Appointments Committee oral report. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Report from the Committee on Records. Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have reviewed the records and they appear to be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor. The first this evening is regarding the appointments of Canine Hangos as a member of the Fitchburg Police Department. I'd like to invite Chief Mardno forward. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, councilors. Mr. Mayor, this is an exciting night for the Fitchburg Police Department. After nearly 20 years of not having a canine unit in the city of Fitchburg, I'm proud to present tonight the newest member of our police department, Canine Hangos. While appointment of a canine is a ceremonial in nature, the bond in which exists between Hangos and his handler, Officer Josh Lambert, they form a bond that makes him a police officer for the truest sense. Canine Officer Hangos was born in Hungary on March 20th, 2018, and he is an even mix of German Shepherd and Belgium Malinois. Canine Officer Hangos was imported from Europe by Shallow Creek Kennels out of Pennsylvania. This is a company that specializes in the importation, breeding, and training of police canines nationally. Canine Officer Hangos and his handler, Officer Lambert, began canine team patrol training course offered by the Massachusetts State Police in May of 2019. This course provided instructions in a number of areas, including but not limited to tactical obedience, article searches, evidence recovery, tracking, building searches, criminal apprehension, and handler protection. The team completed the required 560 hours of rigorous training held by the Massachusetts State Police, and on October 9th, the two successfully completed their certification exam. Canine Hangos will receive dual certification, the second being narcotic detection, which will take place at an early point in 2020. It should be noted that the canine program has been completed and completely funded by grants provided by different areas, specifically the Stanton Grant. In addition to the Stanton Grant, the police department has received generous contributions from the public in support of our canine team. I'd like to give a special thank you to Dr. Baldarelli at Twin City Animal Hospital, who is our veterinarian for Hangos. Also, a special thanks to the former Irish American Association out of Fitchburg for another generous support. It should be noted that the upstart for this program was done completely on grants and through contributions from the general public. And like I said, it's been 20 years since we've had a canine program in the city where we've had to rely on outside support for our canine needs, and this is a big step forward for the Fitchburg Police Department this evening. So, I'm proud to present to the City Council and to the Mayor the newest member of my police department, Canine Hangos.
Do you councilors have any questions of the canine officer?
One question.
Counselor Boishman.
Quick question to you. When he retires, he's not going on the pension plan, is he?
There's no Olped cost here.
All right.
Any other questions or comments from councilors? Counselor Dina Tally.
You said it was paid by grants and private contributions?
I started this venture through the Stanton Grant. That was the largest grant that we received for this. We started receiving donations from the general public. I had mentioned the Irish American group that made a large donation to the police department in support of this. Everything we received thus far paid for the cost of the dog, the outfit of the police car, all the training that the officer -- there's been no out-of-pocket cost at all to the taxpayers at this point, and the money we received should sustain this program for the next three to four years. And at that point after that, the maintenance is basically food and veterinary costs. And like I said, we've established, when we were looking for a vet, I wanted to keep it local, and I tell you, we really hit a home run with Dr. Baldarelli at Twin City Animal Hospital as a local vet care for this dog, so.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think we should try not to take this too personally, but I think that's the most intently in audience, and everyone in this room has stared at any one individual in this room, I think, in the history of these council meetings. But in all seriousness, I want to thank you, Chief Mardno, for pushing this forward and really being a fearless advocate, and to the members of your police department for working so diligently to make this happen. I think this is a wonderful addition to the police force and an exciting moment for the city of Fitchburg.
And I'd like to thank the council and the mayor for giving me the opportunity to do this this evening, because what I mean, the bond that has fallen between Officer Lambert and this dog, this is truly a Fitchburg police officer. He's going to be going out on duty every day protecting the citizens of the city, so thank you for allowing me this opportunity to bring this dog here this evening.
I have one more question.
Counselor Dina Tally.
You said we haven't had a canine unit in 20 years?
1998 was the last time we had a canine in the city.
Was it Mr. Reese, right?
Oh, sorry. So, I mean, not to keep this going, I'm just curious from my own historical perspective. I always thought that every department had, every police department had some sort of a canine presence.
No, we've had a lapse for one reason. One reason or another, we've had a lapse, whether internal disputes, but we haven't had one. We had one all through the 80s and 90s, when myself and Counselor Caddy were working the streets together, and then it was, there was a lapse in it, so.
Sounds like it's an essential need for the department.
It's an extremely essential need. Like I said, we've been relying on the state police and our local communities, Lemonster and Lunenburg, for that type of assistance, and now we're going to be self-sufficient.
My last question, being a money guy here, just curious, how much did it cost to get him feel ready with everything you mentioned? What's the cost?
We're pushing $30,000 right now.
To get him ready? Okay.
Between purchase of the dog, outfit for the cruiser, building of the kennel, stuff of that.
Okay.
Mackey's was very, I'm just looking over you, Mackey's was very supportive.
He did all the work.
And I built it myself.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no objections, we'll now have the clerk swear in Hangos.
Thank you. Want to go in the center?
So, I'm going to swear the dog in, in check, because that's his language, so, because I want him to know what he's getting filled into. Raise your paw. Do you promise, sleep, wish, to be loyal? Beat loyallani, to be brave? Beat statetni, to be dutiful? Beat svedomiti, for the city of Fitchburg? Promesto, Fitchburg? Police Department? Oda dala ni polizia? So help me God, tak mi pomos pogo. Do we have a badge? Ma'am?
Yes.
(Inaudible).
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
You notice she's standing right at you.
I know, huh?
Is it your first time speaking, Chek, in a council meeting?
In a council meeting, yes.
Ah, you seem like a natural, yeah.
That's the cutest thing ever.
All right, moving back to the communications from His Honor, the Mayor. We have an additional six communications from Mr. Alex Lopez, an associate member of the Planning Board, term to expire December 1st, 2021. Mr. Adam Costa is an associate member of the Planning Board, term to expire December 1st, 2021. Ms. Katie Okwendo is an associate member of the Disability Commission, term to expire December 1st, 2021. Ms. Kishla Hansluna is an associate member of the Disability Commission, term to expire December 1st, 2021. Mr. Angel Melendez is an associate member of the Local Cultural Council, term to expire December 1st, 2021. And Ms. Nahalas Torres is an associate member of the Local Cultural Council, term to expire December 1st, 2021. I apologize to those individuals whose names I'm sure I slandered. And we also have a communication and report from the department head, from Mr. Calvin D. Brooks, City Auditor, regarding free cash, and if there are no objections, we will send this to the Finance Committee. And lastly, we have communications from the Department of Revenue regarding free cash. We will also send that to the Finance Committee if there are no objections. And lastly, we have a Pension Reserve Investment Board communication, which will be placed on file at the City Clerk's office. Moving on to the next. Agenda: City Property Committee oral report. Counselor Zarella.
I actually do not have the results in front of me, so I'm going by memory. I apologize for that. The committee met on October 22nd. We heard three petitions. The first, a petition from De Lodge Heights, represented by Attorney Donald O'Neill, to accept a portion of Tibbetts Circle as a public way. That was unanimously approved. Robert Thompson, owner of 69 and 70 Greenhurst Avenue, to acquire the street right of way between the two lots as outlined. If I'm not greatly mistaken, that was, I want to say, held for future, for further investigation.
We passed that.
Did we pass that? Okay. Yeah, I couldn't remember what we had decided on that, honestly. So, that was, it was unanimous, however. And then, two properties, two side yard sales, one of which we did approve, and the other of which we did hold or give leave to withdraw.
Gave 202 Water Street leave to withdraw.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Gave leave to withdraw because it is still needed by the city until sometime in the next few years.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the City Property Oral Committee, the Committee Oral Report. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Public Works Committee report. Counselor Caddy.
Public Works Committee met on October 19th. We had several petitions. The first one, 244-13, Counselor Amy Green on behalf of Dorothy McNamara to request a berm repair at 27 Glendale Ave. That was granted. 252-19, Counselor Paul Boishman, that Boulder Drive from Putnam Street be closed to traffic for pedestrian use only. That was held. 253-19, Counselor Amy Green on behalf of Ray Hogan at 489 Milk Street to fix a broken fence at the corner of Seneca and Milk Street, was granted. 259-19, Counselor Marcus Dina Tally and Amy Green to install a new berm at 89 St. Anthony Street. That was granted. 255-19, Counselor Sam Squalia, Amy Green on behalf of Karen Tinder, to request asphalt pavement installed, the dirt shoulder between the sidewalk edge of the road pavement at 911 Warren Street to be alleviated, to alleviate erosion, to match work down at 15 Warren Street. That was given leave to withdraw. Lastly, 256-19, Counselor Elizabeth Walsh on behalf of Robert and Myrtle Palulo, 39 Matthew Street, Fitchburg, to erect either a berm or other resolution to mitigate the problem of water draining into his driveway and garage during rainstorms, and two, to trim or cut trees on the south side of Gale Street, side of his home, which are leaning toward the patula home and entangled in overhead wires. It was amended to remove second part of the petition as it is completed, and it was granted as amended.
Motion to accept the Committee report.
Second. Motion and second to accept the Public Works Committee report. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Orders Finance. We have 257 up to, including 269-19, destined for the Finance Committee. If there are no objections, we'll send all of those orders to the Finance Committee. Seeing no objection. Orders Other. At this point, I'd ask for Mr. Skorowski and Mr. Dewan to join us. We have several items that are being requested for suspension of the rules. Madam Clerk, do you see any concern with taking 270, 271, and 277 all at the same time under suspension? So, councilors, I would ask for a motion for suspension of the rules.
So moved.
On 270-19, 271-19, and 277-19, which is a petition. I have a motion and second. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The matters are before you. At this point, I will turn this over to Mr. Skorowski and Mr. Dewan for presentation and justification.
Good evening, councilors. I'm going to take a few moments just to overview the reason we asked for a suspension of the rules and what votes need to be taken tonight. We also wanted to take some time with Mark Dewan and Steve Cook here from New View Communities to talk about the entire Fitchburg Arts Community project. As I know many councilors are very curious to know what has happened since we sold the property to New View over a year ago, and now that they've buttoned up the property, put on a roof, and are working through the pre-development stages to get things ready. But before Mark gets there, just briefly, these two issues, 270-19 and 271-19, are connected because when we sold the property to New View Communities through their due diligence before they signed papers, after the purchase and sale but before the final closing happened, they discovered that there was an issue with what a lot of you know as the parking lot and driveway that was an access point for the BF Brown School. Historically, it had been used as such, and I think that's what everybody understood it to be, the parking lot and driveway for the BF Brown School, not parkland. But unfortunately, when the surveys were done and New View was doing their due diligence, they brought to our attention that that area is actually, was deeded parkland in the early 20th century by Arthur Lowe. And what that means basically is through an obscure provision of state law, Article 97, basically states that any parkland needs to be locally determined to be removed from parkland by a unanimous vote of the Conservation Commission and the Parks Board, and then the council needs to authorize us to submit a Home Rule petition to go to the state legislature and get a two-thirds vote from the House and the Senate, allowing this piece of land to be removed from parkland. And so, in order to get that Home Rule petition started, that's Order 271-19, to authorize us to go ahead and basically allow our state representatives to act on our behalf and remove that section of land, not even the entire property, but just the easement on that 18,000 square feet, so New View can utilize this for development of the Fitchburg Arts Community. 270-19 is connected because as part of Article 97, they ask not only, to basically not have a net loss of parkland. So, if we're removing this from parkland, we need to add new parkland in the city, and this was voted unanimously by the Conservation Commission to take this plot of land on Zero Battles Avenue. It's not what you're probably thinking of as Battles, you know, the border between Lemonster and Fitchburg. This is actually right on the outside of Cogswell Park. It's right next to the Bird Sanctuary. It's city of Fitchburg land that was taken in tax possession in 1950, and we're just looking to designate that land as conservation land. So then, when we present our full picture to the state, we're telling the state, we are removing this 18,000 some odd square feet of property from parkland. We are adding 38,000 new conservation land abutting Cogswell, and we want to show the state that this project has unanimous support from Parks Board and Conservation Commission, and ideally unanimous support from this council, to tell the story that this is something that locally we are 100% behind in support of, because ultimately, when this gets on the state senate and the House, when it gets on their table, they're going to look at the background and the history that went into this, and they're going to see that this is a project that has fully and unanimous local support, and they're going to support it as well. So, we certainly hope that you'll support those efforts, and I guess before we get to those votes, I, just in conversing with a lot of folks here, I know you wanted to hear from Mark and New View about the project, how it's progressing, timelines and such, so hand it over to Mark.
Okay. So, I think you guys all know, but just ever, anybody remembers, this is the, this is the vision, what we want to do for the buildings, and this is sort of the overview of the whole area here. So, here's the BF Brown School, the annex, and the stables, and you'll see on this over here, this is what it might look like when it's all done, with the connection to the art museum, and tying in all three of these buildings together for the artist community. And what I'll show you now is just this little blow-up of what we've been doing. So, here's BF Brown School, and what we, this driveway, this is the existing driveway, the chain-linked fence is sort of goes like this, and this was the land that we thought was connected to the school, and it's not. So, that's a real issue for us, because if you don't have access to the road, this land is worthless, essentially. We, you know, you can't get access to this whole area back here. So, thanks to Mayor Dina Tally, to Tom, the city solicitor, we've been working with the Parks Commission for over a year to come up with a plan that works for the Parks Department and works for us, and this is essentially what we've come up with. The one piece that's changed, there are 16 parking spots here. This is going to be, these spots are going to be designated just for parks, so New View will build the parking lot, and then it's still going to be on the parks. There, you got, the Park Department will do whatever it wants to do with that. So, these 16 spots will be here. We've received Planning Board approval for this, so there's 93 parking spots in and around here, including the annex as well. So, we've worked really hard with community development. When we put this forward, we had many different options for how to get the zoning for this, and we chose to go one of the more complicated ways, which is Chapter 40R. You helped to make that happen, I believe, in July before your August break, so that will designate 100, will end up with $150,000 that we're hoping will then be designated to improve the park once the building is completed. So, that's what we've been doing, is finishing up the engineering, finalizing the design so we can go before the Planning Board. The Planning Board unanimously approved the project in, we had a meeting in August, they approved it in September. Oh, we had, sorry, we had one against it.
The only dissenting vote we've had of any votes related to the Fitchburg Arts Community thus far, and I hope it remains the only one.
See, I could have just.
For the record.
So, that's where we are now. Going forward, and then I'll stop and take whatever questions you have, what our process is and why we've asked for the suspension of the rules. Once a year, the state allows us to apply for funding, and so we want to be able to apply for this round of funding to try to get this project funded. We have about $2 million in state historic tax credits that we've raised. We've raised about $300,000 in private donations. We've received our first pre-development funding from the state as well to allow the project to go forward. So, sort of all systems are go with this. Now, the next part that we need to do is to actually get, you know, the millions of dollars, the balance of the money that we need to go forward and actually get into construction. What the state is looking for there is they don't want to fund a project where if they gave us the money, we wouldn't be able to put a shovel in the ground. So, that's called, is the project ready to proceed? And we're not, without a vote from the council and finishing up the issues that Tom talked about, Article 97, we're not ready to proceed. So, that's why I've asked you to suspend the rules tonight, so that when we go to the state at the end of this month, we can say we have all our local approvals in place, and, you know, with support from Senator Tran and Representative Hay, we'll be able to whisk this right through the state legislature. We don't necessarily think that, every once in a while, there's a project that gets funded the first time. And I know the mayor is disappointed to hear this, but it doesn't always have, it's rare when it gets funded on the first time through. We're hoping that it will be, but no promises there. If it were to be funded, we would learn that about the summer of 2020, we would learn that we would be funded. Then it would take another six to nine months to close on the funding, and then another year or so to complete construction. So, probably a little bit more than a year because this is a complex project.
It's not dissimilar to the Yarnloft Project or the Harper Furniture Project. We received funding for the Harper Project this summer. Shovels will be in the ground in February, so that's.
They're all, it just takes a long time to put all those complicated pieces of financing together. So, those are the key issues that we need to sort of solve, is to get this land, and what we're doing here is we're taking an easement. So, the Park Department will still own the land, and the easement will be allowed for us to be able to drive on it and to be able to park here. There's a few other pieces to the easement as well. There'll be a new storm drainage system that we'll put in that will improve the water retention and meet the new requirements from the EPA. There'll also be a little bit of access here from the stables to here, to, this is the second means of egress from the stables onto the park comes out here. And those are the, most of the issues with the easement are really just to be able to pass and repass and be able to park there. So, we think it's a great win-win for the city. It will help to really activate Low Park. We're hoping that we'll get some citizen involved to determine what we should do with the park. When we did this, we worked really hard, the Parks Department at first felt it was really important to preserve the ball field, so the reason why you have this funny shape is that when we started this process, the Parks Department wanted us to preserve the ball field, which is what we did. Now, there's some second thoughts, maybe we can do something else with it. So, we hope there'll be some citizen participation about what should happen at Low Park so that this inner-city park can be utilized to the full extent. You know, that could be, it's a beautiful park, right across the street from the Sun Dial, access to the Fitchburg Art Museum, so we're hoping that will kick off that process as well. So, I think that's the key. That's a good enough summary. I know you guys oftentimes have questions, so rather than rattle on, I'll let you take questions.
Before I start fielding questions, if you wouldn't mind, just so those who are present this evening can see some of the blueprints, would you mind just kind of setting them up on the chairs, just so folks can feel free, anyone who's in the public who's interested in seeing them, feel free to go up. That said, we have councilors with some questions or comments. Counselor Squalia.
Thank you. So, with the easement for, on, so is that still going to be owned by the Parks Department and controlled by the Parks Department? It'll just have an easement, allowing the Fitchburg Arts Community to park there? Or were the city of Fitchburg?
I'm going to turn, I think I'll turn that over to the.
I think Tom wants to answer this question. Okay. I would like you to think of this property as a bundle of sticks. There are a number of rights that you get that come along with owning a property. An easement right, a right to pass and repass, a right to park, is just one of those six sticks within the bundle. So, the Parks Board would continue to retain the other rights of that property, the other five sticks, if you will.
So, it will still be owned by the Parks Department?
Right.
Okay. Now, the, trading of the Battles Ave.
I would like you to think of this property as a bundle of sticks. There are a number of rights that you get that come along with owning a property. An easement right, a right to pass and repass, a right to park is just one of those six sticks within the bundle. So the Parks Board would continue to retain the other rights of that property, the other five sticks, if you will.
So it will still be owned by the Parks Department?
Right.
Okay. Now, the, trading out the Battles Ave property?
Mm-hmm.
It's listed as Battles Road in the, in the petition or ordinance. And I don't know, I had a hard time finding Battles Road, but when you said Battles Ave, I found it. It's like a paper street?
Correct. So it probably, right around World War II, there was a planned subdivision there, and it didn't materialize, or at least the endpoint of it did, did not. So there's a number of projects in a paper street along, basically, if, if you're going down with New Snock, you take a right on St. Martin, and if you would continue St. Martin, imagine it keeps, it continues on as a street all the way to Cogswell. That would be Battles Ave. I have a map here that delineates it if it's helpful for the, to the.
So a little piece of property that borders Cogswell, that'll have a conservation restriction? Or will it be still, still owned by the city of Fitchburg with a conservation restriction? Or will it be part of the Parks Department?
It'll be owned by the city of Fitchburg with a conservation restriction placed upon it. The Parks Board ultimately determined that, that they didn't want the property and they didn't want any other property in return. But we are in a bit of a quandary because we have to, per Article 97, have no net loss of parkland. So Conservation Commission is always looking for new opportunities. Not only does this abut Cogswell, but it also abuts the Bird Sanctuary that is already conservation land.
So it seemed like a win-win from their perspective.
Okay, thank you.
So it's highlighted in, in yellow, the 37,053 square feet. What's in green is, is Cogswell. What's in the fuchsia, I don't know what color that is. That's the Bird Sanctuary.
Oh, yeah. So whether or not you have a ball field in the future, you've demonstrated that you can fit a ball field in there with the parking lot.
Correct. We would need to rotate, we, you need to rotate the, it's a softball field, so we would need to rotate that softball field a few degrees, but essentially it would, it would look exactly like it was, it would just be twisted.
Like about 18 feet is the.
A few degrees?
Yeah, it's not very much.
And is it in part of these discussions that the, the deal with the smart growth payments for the, for the Fitchburg Arts Community, a portion of that monies is going to be donated to Low Park?
So as a component of the smart growth approval, we're going to get a sum of money upon the occupancy permit of the Fitchburg Arts Community project, but that could be quite a few years out. So what we've actually committed to the Parks Board is that we're going to spend at minimum $150,000 towards improvements in the park. It might come from the smart growth funding, it might come from other sources altogether, it might be a mix of CDBG, park funding, 40R funding, but we're committed to seeing at least that, if not, and hopefully more funding allocated towards Low. I think it's a, it's a big priority for the residents in the North Main neighborhood, for New View communities, for the art museum across the street. I think, you know, the TDI partnership across the board, I think we recognize this park is going to play a really transformative role in the Fitchburg Arts Community at large, so we want to make sure we're supporting it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm all set.
Mr. Scruff, you know that bundle of sticks comment is going to hang around for years, right? We're going to be using this for everything now.
Well, I learned from the master, so.
Councillor Green.
Is this, I mean, I realize that we're under a time crunch because of the filing for the funding, but if we, if for some strange reason we decided not to do this, this would essentially stall the project forever, correct?
So if, if the council wasn't to make this determination tonight, or, or even the following night, what this is going to do, and what we're trying to do by November 26, when New View submits their pre-application to the state, they need to show that this project is ready. And to some degree, we're, we're not going to have a two-thirds vote of the state house and the state senate before November 26, but what we can do is everything in our power to show that from a local perspective, we've done everything to see this project through. And that's ultimately when the House and the senate, they don't care about what's happening with 18,000 square feet of easement, of that one of six bundle of sticks in the city of Fitchburg. They, they've got other things to worry about. They want to know, are they approving something that has local support? So the, the goal is when we send this to the state, they make the determination that this project is ready and that it, they can then apply for funding in February. If, if we, if we aren't allowed to do that November 26, we have to wait until November 26 next year, and in all likelihood, it would be denied next year. So then we're on to the following year, and we're looking at, you know, basically pushing this project out another year. And frankly, we would have come to the council a lot earlier on this topic. Thankfully, we just had a unanimous vote by the Parks Board tonight on all of these matters, but that whole process started with the Parks Board in August of 2018. So we would have come sooner, would it have been a possibility to come to you with something that had been approved by the Parks Board, but it took a while. And I, I hope that the city council process does not take as long.
I want to commend the diligence that New View has done to, first of all, recognize that this could be problematic so that we're not faced with another Wallace Civic Center issue with Parks Department that way. So I'm all in favor of moving this forward. I would like this expedited because I would like to see a shovel in the ground like sooner than later on this project. Thank you.
Councillor Boishman.
My, Mr., Tom and I talked a little bit. What I have a hard time with, we use this phrase a lot, and we hear it all the time, buyer beware. The buyer should know what he's getting into. The buyer should know what the rules are. I started on the council in 2013, and in the administration, at least long, I think approximately a following year, BF Brown went up for sale, I think in 2014. I think you brought the building for $5,000.
Yes.
And it was whole, according to the rules and regulations that I understand, at the 2014, that everything was supposed to be upfront, and you were supposed to have all, the way I understand it, you were supposed to have all your finances and everything up for this project to go right off the bat. Why did it take so long to go to the Parks Department about this strip of land?
Did he forget about the fire?
Where it says buyer beware? We do it, I'm asking Mr. Donlin because he bought the property. And at that time, Tom, in all due respect, you weren't here at that time. It was Larry Cassasso was on that board that drew up the plans for us, that gave to this council. I'm not going to hold up your project. I'm not going to do that. But my problem is, and I agree with past council, we get everything at the last minute, and it's rammed down our throat. He had a hard time with the Parks Department because it was rammed down their throat. Everything's at the last minute, and we can't, we don't have time to sort things out. And my other question on the parks, you say you might move the baseball park, why don't you put, there's a lot of kids in that neighborhood that are less fortunate, why don't I put a splash park down there? It'd be highly used more than a baseball park.
So I'll be happy to answer your questions, Councillor Boishman. So when we responded to the RFP, the land, the map that we were given that showed the parcel of land was the assessor's map. The assessor's map showed that the driveway was part of the BF Brown parcel. And in fact, if you walked out there, there was a fence that went right down the line and then took this curve, and it makes perfect sense that that parcel would be there. We were doing our diligence on the project, we were working with the city to come up with a plan when the fire took place. After the fire, you know, we weren't going to do any work, further work on the project until we knew that there were enough insurance proceeds and everything else to move forward. It's very expensive to do all these things. Thanks to City Solicitor AJ and the mayor, they were able to work, it took over a year for them to work with the insurance company to come up with enough proceeds to do whatever the city wanted to do with it. They were really lowballing the number. At that point, New View completed our survey, and before we purchased the property, we knew that this land was not ours. We had multiple meetings with the city solicitor, with the mayor, and with the chair of the Parks Board to say, guys, we don't own this land. We want to get the roof on this now, before the winter comes. The mayor was really insistent upon that, as he should have been. And so we said to the Parks Board, we'll go in a handshake agreement with you that you'll work in good faith with us to get us a driveway to the land, to driveway to the building. If we don't have a driveway, we don't have a project. There's no lender who would lend any money to this project if you can't get into the parking. So we met with the Parks Board before we signed the deed. They said, yes, you know, we don't, we don't know about all the details, but we'll make sure that you have the access that you need so you can get in. And we went in good faith on that. And then the, I, I won't say the, it took a little longer to get from where I thought we were to reach a final agreement. Steve and I went to meetings, multiple, multiple meetings with the Parks Department as they were trying to determine what they wanted to do. At that point, we felt as though we had a little bit of an opportunity to not just take that one strip of the driveway, literally the part of the asphalt that's there now, but let's take that cinder block part two. Let's create some parking for the parks, for the park itself, and let's create a little bit more parking for the Fitchburg Arts Community, so it'll be a, a project that we're all proud of years down the road. You know, the one thing I can say about the Parks Board is we certainly were not, we certainly gave them plenty of time to deliberate over this. We met multiple months, we went out to the site. So we, all I can say is that we had a very robust process with the Parks Board, and this was something that we agreed on. As to your, so I guess that's where we are.
Mr. Donlin, you don't have to address, the splash park is not before us, or what we want to do with the park?
I just thought I'd throw that in, because he said, he didn't know what he was going to do with the baseball park. So I just thought I'd give him a little idea to help him out.
I'm not going to ask Mr. Donlin to, to address, you know, the ultimate use of the park down there.
Correct. I was going to say, that's something that, now that we have reconfigured this, and there's going to be actual parking there, and, you know, let's, I hope that the city will use this as a way to rethink about what Low Park could be, and do we want a softball field there? Do you want an extra basketball court there, a walking trail there? Leave it exactly as it is, put in a splash park? It's, it's a great jewel, let's take advantage of that extra time, that, and this potential extra money that the planning department has found to create a park that we can all be proud of, that will make this neighborhood a great neighborhood.
I got one final question, because we're still talking about the project, are we not? My question to you on the project is, are you going to have a designated area for smoking for the public, for the people that live in that apartment?
This building will be non-smoking, which is, I think, now required by the state, and we'll work with our property management company to come up with sort of a place for the smoking. There's, there's lots of different pros and cons about that, and sometimes you're better off having a designated area, and sometimes you're not.
Okay, that's it. All done, thank you.
Councillor Donlin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the city's made a substantial contribution. The council approved it. This project isn't like buying a single-family or a 10-family or a 20-family building that's already in existence. When the parks were made, I don't know what year that park was actually made, somebody back many years ago made a park. It doesn't mean it's going to be there for 1,000 years. All we're trying to do is get state approval. I question if anybody in the, in the state that's making the decision is really going to come down and visit the site. I question if, how many people in this room or in the city have actually ever been to Battles Street, find out where it is?
Battles Ave.
I also question how many people have actually used the park on Elm Street? You know, I mean, people do use it, but most people here don't. So I don't understand why there's any doubt in the council's mind. We've already voted for it. We're supposed to be working in the best interest of the city, the best interest of the project. We're supposed to be protecting the money that we already contributed to this project. This little thing is insignificant. I don't think we should be doubting the judgment of the park board. They made the decision to support it. We've already made the decision to support it, so why are we second, second guessing an insignificant little piece of? To me, there's no, there should be no discussion. The park voted, park board voted on it, they're protecting the interests of the park, it's going to the state, it's to provide the state regulation. If we wanted to move, remove that whole park and replace it with another park somewhere else, we should be able to do it. Now, if anyone, anyone, I'd like to know how many people here, excuse me, on the council actually went down it. As the council mentioned, it's very difficult to find. I know what Battles Street is, but I don't know where this particular piece of land is. But if that's what it takes, to take this insignificant piece of land to make this project work, I don't think there should be any discussion at all. Thank you.
Councillor Gina Tally.
I agree with Councillor Donlin about, this is a done deal, but I'll be frank, I'm upset that it took, how long did it take to get through the Parks Board?
Our first meeting was August of 2018.
So over a year, 14 months. As you said earlier, Councillor Donlin, insignificant, 14 months it took them? So, sorry, that's ridiculous. But, but they, they're all set now. I just, 14 months is a long time to quibble over a piece of property bordering Low Park that's not even used, you know? So I'm upset about it. Has that hampered your ability to get this project started earlier?
We'll find out. I hope not. I hope, if the council votes tonight, I'm hoping that we can move forward and we'll be able to take care of all of, you know, and the state will find that we're ready to proceed.
I, I don't want to badmouth the Parks Department, and the Parks Board did look at out for the parks, but I look at what they were quibbling over. It wasn't dead smack in the park. It wasn't like we're going right through a playground. It was bordering the park. And you actually look at, the Parks Board, I'm told, didn't even know that that was parkland, you know? And it took 14 months to get this through? I heard the comment about $150,000 that we're agreeing with them to put into something, whether it's that park or another park. Better not be any city money in that, because we got parks already in this city that need attention, and I'd hate to throw $150 into one park when we could use that $150 for several parks. So I just don't, I guess I'm, I can't stand the bureaucracy. 14 months for them to get straight this little space that's not even used by children, not even used. I couldn't believe it when I heard that earlier in the testimony. It took 14 months to get this through. So, sorry, I, did that require unanimous vote of the Parks Board? Is that required by law?
It's, it's not required, but, and Vinnie could, Attorney Pusiteri could elaborate, but when all of the Article 97 local approvals get presented to the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, they kind of help usher the home rule petition to a vote by senate and house. And in order to do so, they want to have the most advantageous proposal that they're bringing in front of the senate and the house. And the, so best practices are that it's unanimous on all fronts, so they can, so the senate and the house don't have to think too hard about this, that they can say, this is something that clearly has everybody's support, they're not going to be hearing opposition from, they will get no flak for this vote. They're clearly representing the interests of the city of Fitchburg.
I, I know there were one or two hanger, one or two held backs, wasn't the whole board, but I just, 14 months. This better not hurt our ability to get this through, because I'm looking at what they were holding us up over. Nothing. So, sorry, just, that was ridiculous when I heard that, 14 months. Thank you.
Councillor Green.
I would just like it noted that on Petition 270, that it is listed on Zero Battles Road, and if it, just so that we are clear.
It is Ave.
It is Avenue. So we should make an amendment to amend Petition 27019 to read Zero Battles Avenue.
Second, I have a motion in second to amend 27019 to reflect Battles Ave, Avenue, not Road. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, it is amended. We also, councillors need a, require an amendment to 27119, just to, to amend it to include the plan, the attached map. And councillors, we're referencing the attached map that's already attached to 27719. We just wanted to be sure it's included in this, this order. We just wanted to be sure it's included in this, this order. So it's already the one you've received.
Second.
I have a motion and second to, to amend to include the, the attached plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. The orders are amended. That said, I'd now entertain a motion to accept 270, 271, and 277-19?
So moved.
Second.
277.
We'll hold out 277, 270, and 271 as amended. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Zarella.
I'd just like to very briefly concur with counselors Donnelly and Dean Attali that the Chapter 97 process that we're finding out about here is frankly absurd, that we have to actually get permission from the state to dispose of this land. And the fact that apparently the law includes a one-way ratchet on parks land so that any land within the city that gets contributed to parks land is a permanent deduction from our usable, buildable land in the city. But obviously, we can't do anything about that. I just hope that at some point, someone at the state level takes a look at that whole process and streamlines it.
Counselor Boishman.
On the topic, it's going to tend to my counsel to rate. I disagree with him. I think it's a marvelous plan. I think everything should go to the state to keep, Paul, it takes it out of it. Because up there in the state house, there's no ties there. Over here, a little twist in the arm and you get what you want. So I don't want that ever to change. I want the state to come in and say, yes, you can or no, you can't. I think it's great. And I don't want it to change. Well, I'm just rectifying that factor.
Counselor, whether or not we like the state rule, that's not, that's not, that's not before us.
I know, but I'm just telling you, he mentioned it.
Okay, okay.
Counselor Caddy.
I just want to make a statement. I don't believe this was forced down our throats. It certainly wasn't forced down the parks board throats. And I, I just want, want you guys to know that. I understand the position you're in. I understand what you went through. And hopefully, this passes unanimously.
I, I'll reflect that same sentiment of, as frustrated as I am that it's taken so long, I know the parks board did this because their task and their sole task as an entity is to ensure proper stewardship of parks land. I don't like that it took 14 months, but they did this out of care and preservation of the parks, which is a gem of our city. And we want them to continue to keep that interest in mind and work diligently and passionately on behalf of the parks. At the same time, you know, I know you've, you've endured a lot over 14 months to get to this point. I certainly hope it didn't hold you back, but I'm excited with that, that we're now at this point. We can stop looking behind us and we can look forward to hopefully your successful grant application and hopefully immediate funding.
Thank you, Counselor. Now, I, I would say, I mean, it's been, like I said, it's been a robust process. They've had certain things they've wanted to do. We've had to go through the planning board. You know, we got, we went through the planning board, so it was a little back and forth between parks and planning. So it's not, it's complicated to get, to put it all together. And, you know, I think once, particularly the, once people had sort of a problem solving mentality, we were able to really solve the problems and, and get ready to go.
Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you. I'd just like to put perspective on big developments. And we're concerned about 12 months or 24 months or 36 months. Private owner that owned Anwell Shoe, they did a lot of work in the 90s. In the last couple of years, it took them 20 years to fill the building in a multimillion, multimillion dollar project. Project on River Street, all those old, old mills. We weren't privy from the beginning, in the middle, to the end, when they were developed. Took many years. It didn't just happen in, whatever timeframe that they're working on is short, but we weren't privy. So we only know when they went to planning and zoning and all the other things that they had to do. And the one on River Street, they did it in stages. And the yarn works on Main Street. We weren't privy from the beginning. You don't know how long it took and how many permits and how long it took to get the financing, put all the partnerships together. So because we're here, we're kind of amazed that we've been part of it and now we're questioning if we did the right thing. But these are our multimillion dollar projects. Some of them bigger than this project here. These projects don't happen in days and weeks and months like you're buying a home or an apartment out of a small building. These are massive, massive projects. So you can be amazed at it, but that's how these big projects take a long time, lots of coordination, local, look right here, council, the park board, the state, is all different kinds of things and their financing is even different. So because we're privy and we're not familiar with it, we're second guessing ourselves. And I don't think we should be doing that. That's not our expertise. Thank you.
Counselor Dean Attali.
Maybe I'm confused by that last comment. I'm, I don't know who's second, I'm not second. I don't know who here is second guessing anything. This is a no-brainer. And I actually agree with Counsel Donnelly when he said we shouldn't even have the discussion, just pass it. I'm just, I understand things take time. That's how government works. I'm just saying 14 months for that is ridiculous. But everything else, I probably understand. But again, insignificant piece of land held up for 14 months. That's what I'm upset about. Not that, I understand this project may not happen for years. I hope I'm wrong, but that wasn't my comment. I'm not second guessing anything. And I don't even know if you were referring to me. Probably not. I just want to make it clear from where I sit, I'm not second guessing this. I don't think anyone else really is. I'm just upset that there was a comment made that we, we strong darned through this and 14 months, I mean, over nothing. That's all. So, thank you.
We have a motion and second before us to move these forward. So I have a motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries as amended 270, 271.
Question.
Counselor Caddy.
Could you work with a solicitor and draft a letter that every council member can sign to put with their grant application? I don't know if it'll make a difference, but it'll certainly.
Guess as an additional letter of support on behalf of the Pittsburgh City Council.
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, is that something we can do with a formal?
No concerns. Okay.
All right.
We'll put it on as a matter.
Unless there are objections, we'll.
That'd be great.
We will do so. Absolutely.
I'll sign that.
Great suggestion.
So we have 277-19. We suspended the rules. That is before us, before we entertain a motion. Mr. Solicitor.
So this is a petition to ask you to declare the property surplus. The procedure typically is you refer to your property committee. And at, during the intervening period, a survey goes out to department heads to determine if there is any need or if the property truly is surplus from your perspective, your department heads. I would just say that the Conservation Commission and the Parks Board have already voted unanimously that this is surplus from their perspective. And I would leave that into your discretion, Mr. President, as to how you want to proceed.
If I could add, Attorney, in addition to that, when the planning board approvals were made, we have to send out the plans to every single department head to approve them. And the approval can't happen without their approval. So I think between all of those boards, you can make a strong argument that implied consent happened there as well.
Counselors, I think there's enough collective frustration over bureaucracy that tonight, I would hate for bureaucracy to hold yet up, yet another thing. Can we, if, I'd entertain a motion to, to accept 277-19.
So move.
I have a motion and second. Speaking on the motions, Counselor Zarella.
I would just agree that we can easily deem this to have been appropriately sent out and approved through the planning board process. There's no need for a duplicative submission of opinions to the council, which would say the same thing they said to the planning board.
Counselor Squalia.
Just to clarify, is this the same piece of property that we're talking, the parking, or a different adjacent area on Zero Elm?
Correct. It's, it's the same.
The same little sliver that we're talking about.
We have to go through the purchasing process like this, like it were any other piece of land, which entails putting it out to be surplus, putting it out to an RFP following that.
Okay. Sounds good.
I have a motion and second to accept 277-19. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you for all of your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
All right. Ordinances. Counselors, bear with me here, we have a bunch of them. 272-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 134, peddling and soliciting Section 16 police investigations of applicant and contents of license regarding fingerprints, first reading. Counselor Squalia.
When did this come before us as a petition? It's an ordinance. So this is the first that we're seeing?
It did not. This is coming before it as an ordinance.
We should send this to Legislative Affairs Committee for discussion?
We could.
I'd like to move that we send 272-19 to Legislative Affairs.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 272-19 to Legislative Affairs. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion. One in opposition, Counselor Fleming, in opposition, but it passes by a margin of nine to one. 273-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 44, Section 10 of the city code by striking where applicable, the $1,500 paid to the chairperson of the Board of Assessors and inserting nothing in its place, first reading.
Move that be sent to its first reading?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 273-19 to its first reading. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. 274-19, an ordinance amending section, I'm going to do, the next, counselors, the next three are interrelated as part of a plan and a petition that was, that did come before Public Safety that was passed unanimously upon the recommendation of the police department. So 274, 275, and 276.
Move 274, 275, 276 be sent to its first reading?
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 274 up to and including 276-19 to their first reading. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. 251-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 3, Section 23 residency requirement of the code of the city of Pittsburgh by deleting it in its entirety, reference petition 93.
Send to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 251-19, reference petition 93, 2010, to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Squalia.
Just one note, I had a question about this petition. So just to clarify, this, this ordinance would only apply to the Board of Assessors residency requirement. There was no other requirement in, in the existing ordinance.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. All right. Petitions, we have only 278-19, which will be sent to the Legislative Affairs Committee unless there is any objection. Seeing none, just a brief announcement before we adjourn. I want to thank all of the candidates in this past Tuesday's municipal election and certainly congratulate those that were successful in their campaigns for mayor, city council, and for those on the school committee. And I want to send an even greater thanks to our city clerk's office and the various election workers who worked. It's a long day and a long week that leads up to, to it. Is, as tiring and as stressful as it may be on the candidates, I think that, that stress and that energy that's required is even greater on the city clerk's office and on those election workers. So I want to thank you for another. And that represented the last election that city clerk Anna Farrell will oversee. And this was the first election that Mary Di Alderete was, was present for, for the city of Pittsburgh. So thank you both. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, I just thank you for this opportunity. I want to recognize Professor Shane Martin's State and Urban Government class from Pittsburgh State University has joined us tonight. And thank you, young folks, for coming in and seeing how, how government works. We hope you're sold on it. We'll be proud of you. Thank you.
Many of us around the table, I'll add, many of us around the table are Pittsburgh State University graduates ourselves. So one day, you may, you may be sitting in our seats. And I, and I, I hope you take advantage of that situation and you get involved in your, your local government, municipality, wherever that may be. Counselor Squalia.
I have an announcement, just to remind everyone, the city of Pittsburgh is having its Veterans Day ceremony on Monday at 11:00 AM sharp at O'Neill Hall at 14 Wallace Avenue at the senior center.